So I'm calling to order a hearing of the Los Angeles County Commission on Human Relations. This is a public hearing on policing and human relations in the second supervisor of the district. Welcome everyone here. My name is Isabel Gunning, I'm president of LA County Commission on Human Relations. And as commission's president, it's really my privilege to chair this hearing and have a generous gathering of people. And I'd like to first and foremost thank all of you who've come back this Saturday morning in this beautiful space for coming for this very, very important matter, not just to this district but to our city and state. What I'd like to do is today, I'm going by a number of fellow commissioners, and I'm gonna ask them to just briefly introduce themselves to you now.
Good morning, my name is Paula De La Montaño, I'm from Chicago, I'm from the city of Minneapolis, and I think you all can hear me.
Good morning, my name is Preepi Wogiri, I'm representing the better district, and I look forward to hearing about your interactions with the police. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Monene Abdullah, I am a chair of this committee and vice president of the commission, and I represent the second district.
Morning everyone, my name is Cynthia Anderson Barker, I'm a civil rights attorney specializing in police cases, and I am representing the district of Hilda, supervisor of Hilda Sobis.
We welcome you all here, good morning, my name is Jared Tomas Pagnos, I'm from District One, Hilda Sobis is district, and commissioner as well, one of the past chairs of the commission.
Thank you all. Sitting next to me is the executive director of the Human Relations Commission, Robin Toma, so I'm grateful to have him here, and we've got a number of fabulous staff, there's some over there, Jan, there's a girl right there, Lisa, Josh is someplace crawling around? There he is, okay, great people, these are the folks to, if there are any issues or concerns, rush to them, and they'll be able to help. So at this time, I'd like to invite up the president and CEO of the Los Labor Community Action Committee, Timothy Watkins, to share some greetings. Okay.
Thank you commissioners for staging this event here, it's actually my honor and privilege to welcome you, Watson, to the House of WLCAC, and to the audience, I think it's very, very important that you chose to attend this because, you know, we're gonna have a conversation that's so timely, this is not, you know, anything more than, anything less than providential. I think that when you look at the national scene and what's going on in terms of people having dialogue and communication, and how destructive and how angry the conversation is, I'm hoping that today, we have a conversation and dialogue that is powerfully on par. If you've got a group of powerful commissioners here, we've got a group of powerful community members, let's keep this very balanced, and let's speak the truth to power, let's keep parity in place, because that's what I want to contend here before I get off the mic. But the thing that we're missing in Los Angeles community relations with the Los Angeles Police Department, and I've talked to the chief about this, is a lack of parity. And we've always got this subservient or subjective kind of relationship with law enforcement officers, we go to the events in the community, two minutes at the mic, I understand we've got to manage time, and those events, but at the end of the day, being able to talk about the reality of people that are subject to, in some cases, the decisions in a split second or the whim of someone that actually has the power to preserve for in your life, deserves no less than the inequality and equity in terms of decision-making and behaviors that we all deserve. We need that at the national level as well, we all can see unprecedented turnout of people that are concerned about how we're being talked to and how we're being listened to. So today, I'd just like to encourage everyone to remember that the way that we're talking to each other, the way we're listening to each other, is going to determine the results and really, you know, how the community ends up being the primary beneficiary of this kind of undertaking. So again, thank you for coming out, welcome to WLCAC, I'm gonna turn the mic back over.
Timothy, thank you for your remarks, and a special thank you for hosting us here in this fabulous space. Just briefly, a little background, the county Human Relations Commission's origins on human relations and policing can be traced all the way back to the 1940 Zoots Super riots, where there was an election of the racial violence over policing issues. And we issued a report back in 1965, after the Watts riots, which everyone will remember again, that that rebellion was the result of policing issues as well. And of course, there was the 1992 uprising after the Rodney King riots. And so, the 50th anniversary of the 1965 Watts Rebellion took place, this commission decided it was certainly time for us to take a stop of the state of policing and human relations in our county, and to hear from communities in every single supervisor of district on West Illinois, and it's one of our strategic role priorities. So today is the fourth of six public hearings that the Human Relations Commission is holding countywide, and we, the commission, came here today because we want to hear from all of you, the community first, about your personal experiences with law enforcement officers and agencies, we want to hear your suggestions for increasing fairness and equity in policing, we want to hear your ideas for building, maintaining, and positive relationships that should be reserved between the police and our communities. After this hearing, we're going to have three more community public hearings, one is gonna be in the third district, the other will be focused on women and LGBTQ issues, and we're also planning to hold a hearing in March to hear from law enforcement representatives. In addition, we're obtaining information from all manner of folks, founders, community members, about best practices and recommendations, so anything in writing, we are welcoming regardless of where. The results of the hearings and the additional information will be combined into a convention book, and will include recommendations for ways to support strong positive relations. So I want to say, of course, that we are essentially a fact-finding body, and we don't have the power of the law in life to force people to do the right thing. But our hope from this is that with our gathering of your information, with your continuing to gather together as community members, as community groups, that whatever recommendations will reflect your desires, your concerns on how to improve relations, and that together, through a lot of activism, those things will in fact be put into effect. It will be a community effort, activism altogether. So that's a little bit of the background, and what I'd like to do is invite Commissioner Monene Villa, who is the chair of our Policing Practices Committee, and has been our driving force in putting these things together, make a few remarks.
Thank you Commissioner Gunning. So welcome everybody, thank you for coming. As Commissioner Gunning shared with you, we wanted to absolutely recognize the 50th anniversary of the Watts Rebellion, when we conceived of this police hearings, the hearings on policing, we also wanted to recognize the 25th anniversary of the 92 uprising, and in recognizing those two uprisings, we recognized that police abuse sparked both, right? And so we are now recognizing that in this space, in a space like Watts, in spaces throughout the county, communities continue to experience very similar conditions, and we wanted to give voice to the community. So what this hearing is intended to do is to be a space where you can share your authentic experiences with law enforcement. And so we want you to have freedom to do that, we did not invite any members of law enforcement to this hearing, we know that there was one person who came, and when she came, we let her know that this was a community space, and she agreed to not be present. And so, this should be a space where you are free to express both your experiences, but also we want you to share with us what your recommendations are. So we are putting your experiences on the official record, and then what will happen out of these spaces, we'll generate a report, looking at both those experiences, some of those experiences, not all of them, as well as listing the best practices. As you're giving us your comments, as you're giving us your recommendations, we also encourage you to think about public safety holistically, right? So as you're coming up with ideas and what you'd like to see in terms of public safety, we'd like you to not simply confine it to police and human relations, we'd like you to also think about what you think creates state communities, because that will help us in developing this report. We'd like to acknowledge the law students who are at the back of the law students waving their hands, they are here to help you if you would like to file official complaints against law enforcement units, they're there to help you fill out that paperwork. I'm also required to tell you that if you'd like to complete a commendation, they can help you do that too. So thank you for being here, law students. We also want to acknowledge Alex Bustamante, who's the LAPD Inspector General, which means he is not a police officer, right? So I want to be real clear, what the Inspector General's office does is actually investigate and investigate the police. So he's here to hear from you, not here to speak, but he's here to kind of hear what's happening in the community from the community force. So just want to assure you that he is not the police, he's from the Inspector General's office with the City of Los Angeles. And I think that, that's, what's that supposed to say? Oh, there are the, the bathroom. Okay. Get over here. So one of our wonderful staffers, Preepi, can help, if you see her in his arms, that's the bathroom, he's back there, so you can go that way if you need to use the restroom. We also want to thank our anchor organizations for being here, so National Daylaborers, thank you for helping us. And so, before we kick off with our anchor orgs who will start off our testimony, I just want to talk a little bit about the practicality of it all. So the first thing is that we've got speaker forms, they look like this, you can get them up at the front, please go down if you're going to speak. We do, we want to make sure that we're able to do all of this in a fairly orderly fashion, and so having people fill out these forms will help us to make sure that we get everybody in order. You know that everybody has a two-minute limit, and one of the things that we're gonna do, especially if we get even more folks coming, that there'll probably be something like, I don't know, maybe 12, 13 yourself, for you to go and fill out the forms, so that we can make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. You can testify anonymously if you want to, so there are a number of ways that you can do that. You can, we still give the speaker form, but you can use only your first name and initial, or if you want, you can use a fake. And we can also have an Aston Lord's Guild representative, or someone else speak or read the testimony in the background. There will also be at the speakers table, which is pointing directly at it over there, a white sheet of paper, so that if you don't want your face to be seen, you can hold that up and cover your face for your testimony.
They're gonna be speaking from there.
We also have another space, Nico, he's standing right back there with his hand, and Jeremy? Jeremy was with Nico, he will be doing video recording. So if you don't want to testify publicly, you can do something there with him for your two minutes, and also recall that if you've got more than two minutes until you find out time here, one of the things you can do is finish up with him in that next room. You can also submit anything in writing after this hearing, or actually, you can submit a video testimony after this hearing as well. And I think we're having, trying to keep it, the parents' max and two minutes max for the video recording of additional material. As I said, we have a time limit of two minutes, and the other thing I guess I should say is we're gonna quiet down, we'll be signing up, saying, you know, one minute left, three seconds left, time now. Please respect that, know that we've got a number of options for your finish up, if there's more that you want to say, both here or submitting later, and if it turns out that we have time at the end, because everybody's had a chance to speak, then you can come back around as well, we're clearly happy to do that. But we do want to make sure that everybody who's come forward to testify and to speak about their experiences and their recommendations has an opportunity to do so in this community space. Of course, we're gonna be asking you to respect us and respect each other, we want you to come forward if you're comfortable in this space, to speak your truth, and to speak on your own, I know there's some very difficult issues, and to respect each other, support each other, and if you do that. Of course, we'll need to have your cell phones turned on, vibration turned off, know that of course, this is being recorded as a public meeting, so even if you're not coming up to speak, your face could be on there, so you can just don't worry about that, okay? Whether or not you are intending to speak today, if you want more information about what's going on with our hearings, please feel free to speak to one of the staff at the front table, and they'll let you know how you can be contacted in order to keep a product of how we're doing with the next hearings, or the where it is, that sort of information. The last thing before we start out, is that today, we've been fortunate to have a way for all of you here with us, whether or not you're speaking, to be heard regarding some views about policing issues. So we have a series of 12 questions that we're gonna ask you, and now if you're all right now, and you're about to speak, and then...
I'm just recording this right now.
Okay, everybody should have clickers, so that if, and if you don't have a clicker, so that you're able to respond to the questions that are gonna go up, then, there's Jeremy, he's right at the stand over there at the table, he will be happy to provide you with some. You wanna do the first two right now? Oh, let's get some people, get some clickers, okay. So what I think we'll do is, people are getting clickers. So just in terms of format, there's a couple of things that we want to acknowledge, the anchor organizations are gonna be first up to offer what we're calling expert testimony, and so they'll get a little bit more time, five minutes apiece. And then, following that, we have some family members of those who suffered police violence, and some who were killed by police, so we have the father of my niece, Richardson, Michael Richardson is here, so he'll be next up, along with Lisa Heinz, who's the mother of Lakeisha Wilson, I think she's picking up a clicker, and she'll also be here, and then finally, Luis Carrillo, who's representing the young man who was recently assaulted and shot by an LAPD officer, Anna Heinz, is also here, and he'll be offering his remarks. And then we'll open it up to the general folks. So we're gonna be a little bit looser on time with the family members, recognizing that you have a lot to share, we're very thankful that you are courageous and came out and are here with us, and we offer our prayers and love to you and support to you, and thank you for being warriors for your children and also for the community.
Maybe you'll be behind me. The first question is, are you a resident of Watts or associate of Los Angeles? So you can pick one or two.
But if you live here, but you're not longer in here?
I would say, what are your current status? Why is it yes, two is for no? Is there any issue about turning them on, is it early on, right, it's just kind of pressing that one or two, yes or no?
So...
So, um...
So, my name is Pita, I'm a resident, and I have a student feel they're that is why I can't be back, or can I go back? I used to go to school, and you want to, it's located right on the street, so students who get out of school, or like going out, like, but in the, at least we saw this, and then it's all like, so let's go home, go home. Pretty much, no, no, I was bicycle, expect, why are you telling us to go home? Maybe if you guys, you get that, at least 5% of major LA County law enforcement plans that could in the LA County share improvisation, should have done in quotes, to fund semi- youth centers, 650 youth builders, transportation workers, in school and communities, and 35,000 young consumers to do jobs, as well establish a county leadership board to involve youth in this county, and the placement of youth that are going to end up in this county, as well to involve youth in funding decision and program evaluation. Youth leadership board members, who would also be moved to other areas, opportunities in county government within county agencies and community-based organizations.
Thank you.
So, I mean, so the Allen and the other guys who are leading Justice Coalition, and what do you think of this, rather, those recommendations and solutions that are part of our, our campaign, it's probably LA County campaign? Some of our students don't feel like high school, they hold, we hold a march to respect event every year, where, one year we did a 50 mile march from Somar to Norwalk, and we collected surveys from residents talking about the policing that was going on, and what alternative alternatives they wanted to see. So from those surveys, those three main solutions, or actually, were asked for, so they asked for more youth centers in the community, more youth jobs, as well as peace builders or intermission workers. So, we, from our LUV campaign, we are asking that 5% suppression funds be redirected towards community, and we are asking for that at the city and the county level. So, everyone needs to highlight even the recent report that we've released, some of the data that we shared, and this is just for one area in LA County, so this is focusing on Los, the city of Los Angeles. So LAPD gets over 53% of LA, public cities under districted budget, and in 2016, even though the crime rate dropped to its lowest level since the 1950s, the LAPD budget went up by 732 million dollars. So again, over 700 million dollars. Currently, the LAPD's budget is seven times higher than LA's any public development team. And so we see a very major problem in this, so within our campaign, we are asking, as we just said, for youth development departments to be created, so we have infrastructure to house more funding that's gonna go towards spaces that we currently have, and are supposed to act as street open public spaces, such as the libraries, but as we've all just heard, those are not even available to use, so where are we supposed to go? So, currently, as well within the county, we're working on a report that is gonna be released, and the funding that is spent on shared probation and bond enforcement is 136 times than what is spent on youth development. So, we are suggesting again that you look at alternatives to spending on law enforcement, and having youth be a part of that discussion, discussion of decision-making, and in that vision of how funding can be allocated, and where that youth development can be created, it might act like, or be on its own, as its own department, or it might be housed under a letter, so a great suggestion would be, especially where we're at right now, it could be housed under board development, and county's senior services department as well. So there's different ways we can look at how we can build that moving forward, but we really stress being aware of, instead of that continuing killing and criminalization that's going on, we really need to look at what's needed and what are we asking for. So we can also share both of those reports, and all these studies can get an inspiration.
Thank you so much. I want to read those reports, and I really want to thank, to pizza, fully approached and needed for us. So next up is the National Daylabor Organizing Network.
Good morning, my name is David Rood, I'm an organizer with the National Daylabor Organizing Network, thank you all for having us here this morning. I want to bring up a few issues in terms of policing and day labor first, and maybe some general issues with decriminalization and decriminalization of younger communities. First of all, in terms of the way which day laborers have been criminalized in the city of Los Angeles and the county, the Los Angeles County in general, there's been decades-long effort from right-wing movements, as well as policing, to cast day laborers as a problem, to cast the solicitation of work in order to make a living as a problem. This has resulted in the creation of new labor conditions that lead to anti-solicitation ordinances. This has been something that the head of the National Daylabor Organizing Network has been fighting for decades, but it's a issue that continues to arise. I think there has been great strive forward in the decriminalizing of day laborers and other folks who are looking for other non-traditional types of labor, in particular, the legalization of street vending, which has happened in Los Angeles, but there needs to be a much stronger stance from the city to fully fund day labor centers, to not criminalize day laborers. When we talk about fully funding day labor centers, for us, the seven day laborers centers that we have only get $750,000 from the city, which is almost nothing when you look, when you compare it to the kind of funding that the LAPD and the Sheriff's Department is receiving. And furthermore, when the LAPD and the Sheriff's Department continues to gain collaboration with entities that are seeking to criminalize day labor, day labor and the solicitation of labor for possibilities of making a living, this is depriving day laborers of personal rights, and specifically, the first movement writes to rights to work, right, is specifically hardest day labor community, because most of our day laborers are immigrants, and can leave, and then through that criminalization, to the annual deportation, the process of deportation, especially now with the new priorities that have been enacted by the new president and the new administration. And in general, I want to talk a little bit more about the kind of, the collaboration between the LAPD, the Sheriff's Department, and ICE, the way that the LAPD claims that there is no collaboration at this point with ICE, which we've found... which we've found, time and time again, to be not true, specifically that L A P D continues to collaborate with the homeland security investigations, uh, on what they call transnational gangs and human trafficking. However, these type of, uh, actions often sweep with them many of the folks who are not, who have no criminal background, or folks of very low, very low levels offenses. Uh, here in South Central, one of the recent base that happened, uh, that was supposed to be on, uh, trans, I mean, a transnational criminal gang, was actually on a house party. Uh, and when the police, when the L A P D and H S I showed up, what, they were only able to find enough marijuana to connect one person to the crime possession, and, uh, they found a guy in the backyard of the house that gave a rape. In this grave, nine people who had no criminal background, but weren't documented, were picked up missing before day labor proceedings, then they're not currently deported. As we know, deportation often leads to people's death, especially when people are being deported to Latin American countries, uh, to countries in Central America especially. Uh, so this is actually a way which the L A P D is killing our communities, killing other communities, uh, and other communities of color. Uh, furthermore, there's also a way in which the L A P D continues to put people into a gang database without their knowledge or consent, with very little proof of what's going on. One of our, one of the cases that we have been supporting is, uh, Socie, Socie Hernandez, uh, who was picked up because one L A P D officer saw her near a house of someone who was a suspected gang member. And she was put in deportation proceedings and continues to fight for deportation today. So there are efforts from the L A P D and the Sheriff's Department to continue to work with ICE and to give them access to their databases, uh, in order to criminalize our communities and put people in deportation proceedings. Uh, and I want to stress again, the need to fully fund day labor centers, and the need to be criminalized day labor work in the county and the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you so much. I know you say that people need translation, uh, all having a bunch of silent pains. Um, so see what the best if you need to get, whatever your funds are for that. Next up is the Los Angeles County Man's Union. I think you're coming down the campus.
I'm here from, well, I've been here a couple of times every day, which is really, uh, I seek ways and ways by which we can culturally enrich the, uh, this center. Uh, this is a forty-five thousand square foot building, uh, that, uh, is basically unsubsidized and doesn't receive any kind of program, grant, contract, uh, revenue in order to keep going. But we committed it along the entire set of acres to the idea of cultural enrichment, because that's where we think our society is failing. If we don't recognize people's cultural condition, the first thing we think about is song, dance, flavor, food, you know, clothing, and so on, so forth. We don't look at, for instance, here in Los, where even mortality rates are amongst the highest in the nation, uh, where the decivism rates are amongst the highest per capita. We don't look at the low literacy rates. We don't question why this at a third grader can reach successfully, but at a fourth grade camp and at a fifth and sixth and seventh, it's still being a third grade level. And we don't question why that is. While we put people on moons and Mars and all of the, all over the system, uh, we're able to engineer those outcomes within the kind of precise proximity that only science and science can produce, because we'll, we'll land something on the moon within inches of where we plan to do it and within seconds of when we're supposed to do it on the, but we came to the third grade degree and fourth grade level. There's something wrong with the way that we're looking at all this, and I suggest that, as we look at people's behaviors, and we understand that they come to school, for instance, under immense pressure, sometimes irreparable, sometimes they're seeing their neighbor killed, sometimes their parents are unemployed, maybe they're homeless. Um, maybe their younger brother, sister died from whatever at birth because of the poor health condition of so many residents. If you live in Watts, uh, one of the pressures we live with is the knowledge that you will live twelve years less than if you live in West Los Angeles. And so with that knowledge, you know, there's something missing in terms of how we're informing people. We keep talking about education, but education is, doesn't mean a damn thing if people aren't informed about the immediacy of what they're being exposed to. When you think about the environment and condition of a place, this is something I'm deeply immersed in. The poisonous environment that Watts is today, and how so many of the children have been subjected to lead exposure, arsenic exposure, chromium burial, and all these different heavy metal, uh, toxins. Um, why isn't there, why isn't there an end permit of what we spend on enforcement on looking at the intersection of those exposures and children's outcomes? Lead, lead is a cumulative, uh, element. Once it gets into the body, it doesn't just go away. You don't piss it out. It goes into your skeleton and it sits there, and as it accumulates, and it accumulates more and more, at some point it starts niching back into the system, and a public health nurse takes your, uh, blood test so you can tell if the kid is ready to go to school and learn. And oh, he's got two parts familiar, lead in his blood, and that family is told that, oh, it's okay, he can live with that. Of course he can live with it. But what is his life style going to be? What is the quality of life going to be? What kind of adolescent is he going to be? What is he going to be when he gets to be fourteen years old? And now he's just, you know, pushed into special ed and given psychotropic drugs to keep him from being sorority. And all he's looked at, what's underlying that? And I think that's where our gross failure is as a society, is that we blame the victims for their own condition. We blame the parents, it's going through the same system, just for sending their children through. And we never get to the borderline cause, causes. So I think that, you know, we've got to look at environmental impacts. We've got to look at the cultural condition of a place and not just assess, you know, the quality of food in that neighborhood, uh, but whether or not kids are getting poisoned by eating that food, whether kids are getting poisoned by the dirt outside the front door of their place. And we've got to look also at, you know, how nice it is, we're having this conversation now, but damn, uh, I'm a child of a white woman and a black man, and all the black folks that I knew, uh, for the most part, gone. This is a different community today, because kind of plans that is taking place here to send black people out to the interlimire, to the, uh, you know, uh, Palmville, Lancaster, and so on. We need to look at this in a way that's whole, complete, not just what started, you know, in the last ten years, but what's been going on since, uh, this was the place called Watts.
Thank you so much. Yes. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hey, good morning. My name is Kate, and I'm president of Priory Churches for the Dallas City Thanks. Uh, I'm here today, uh, in particular to, uh, address some of the challenges that the community may face when we analyze twenty-five years ago. It is April twenty-nine, only the country down there is in L A riots. Uh, not only is the police actions that also cause trouble, but at the same time, but there is lack of police action that also causes, uh, trauma as well. And in terms of the L A riots, those billion dollars in bombing events that were prepared, and all that, over forty percent were prepared by hand because of lack of police action. And so I would like to just say that there is, um, a space beyond that for the last twenty-five years, the Black-Canadian relationship has evolved, and our organization was all around the Priory and Me. Uh, and so there's wonderful stories as well. But I think around the narrative with the priory store owners and with the Black client relationship, there is, uh, room to grow and learn. And I just want to say that many store owners in L A County, Priory's have the lowest percentage rate, one of the lowest liquid masses. And so they're here in these communities, uh, on the beat of the law because they're part of a community. And with that, they're living there sixteen-hour days. Uh, and so they also have a lot as well, in terms of the advancement and the health of the community. So one recommendation that I would like to suggest is that, uh, these store owners, um, can now look upon as outsiders, you know, one as self-stay holders, uh, who are also a separate economic ownership, and instead of being divisive, because things have not evolved in the last twenty-five years in that space, but be able to have some new conversations. Second piece is that Priory and the Asians are also looking to the police violence. Um, last May, there was an older lady, ninety-two-year-old, who was going to the early morning prayer at the church, and the police was blocking the drive-in, so she honked a few times. And as soon as she marked, the police came and knocked her down to the pavement, and there was extreme escalation. Uh, and at this point, you know, there was anything to respond, go to the police. Um, in addition, I think, in the current environment, especially, uh, with the presidential, uh, challenges, I think there's increase in violence by all communities of color, as well as women and other vulnerable communities. And again, I just want to highlight that in December, it was a church, uh, with signs as well, uh, getting all over as well. And I'm just wondering that if there were some more, uh, increased community cooperation around those kinds of threats and actions, that there was more of a team that was ready to respond. Because I know that even for this church, it's kind of just, there, there isn't a directed focus effort as well. So I would like to also recommend that as well. Last is that, uh, there are many businesses in the Priory, and, um, sometimes the legal system is very vague in terms of what is allowed and not allowed. Uh, and so that creates room and space for at least kind of police businesses. Uh, and so I think again, I could go into more details, but I think allowing for clearer rules and passing for success, uh, where the businesses are not obligated to have to play the game, uh, would be also another way that, uh, that it could be better cooperation and relationship with the police. And I think using their platforms to demand, uh, things that, um, versus, it's a, maybe based on good relationship with the world, but more coming as entitlement, are also the challenges that needs to be addressed as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Black President.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm going to try to make this as brief as I can. We, um, as you know, for several years now, since the beginning of the L A, uh, UZL for, BLM has been on the ground, uh, working with families and the community to, uh, stand up against the oppression of black people in the, uh, in the Los Angeles County communities, uh, and to basically respond to the ongoing slaughter of black people in, uh, Los Angeles County. So, uh, there have been, I'm going to give you some statistics, and then I'll tell you what BLM is demanding of Mayor Barseth. Over, uh, one thousand one hundred racial bias complaints have been, um, issued to the police force or to the, to the commission and to the, to the L A P D. Uh, I don't know if you realize that, um, this runs a few things, they, they're like two lines of, alright. So L A, uh, P D has the distinct honor or dishonor of being the most murderous police department in the country. Yet no officer ever charged or disciplined. Um, you know, our police commission just fails to find any fault in, uh, the folks that control our areas. Uh, Police Chief Beck said on CCTV, uh, after a police commission ruled the stop of UZL four to be out of policy, he told the police officers, "Don't worry about it. Uh, we got you covered. The mayor and I support you. You're doing a great job." Now, this is after the commission had said that the shooting was out of policy. Um, uh, he said, "We'll protect you like the vest you wear", which basically continues to give them license to continue killing black people. L A P D has an over investment of PR to shield their violent culture, although they are the most murderous. Um, for instance, after the killing of Alton Sterling and Orlando Castillo, Mayor Beck reached out to the celebrity, the game, um, who was on trial at the time for rape, and Snoop Dogg, to represent black folks as the unified front with policing in L A. Um, you know, we, we just shook our heads. We could not believe that they would go to some, to folks that are not representative of the families that are here who have lost loved ones at the hands of the police, but some high, uh, you know, notoriety, noticeable, uh, celebrities to talk about how they're working with the police. Uh, the L A P D is pushing a campaign of rebuilding trust, although we've never trusted that. They, this is not a, I mean, going all the way back past Dale Gates, uh, to, you know, to police officers in the fifties and sixties. Like, my mother, in nineteen fifty-seven, belonged to an organization called Stop Police Brutality. So, uh, I don't know what trust they're trying to reestablish, because there is no trust there, and hasn't been. So we have five demands for the mayor. The first is to fire Chief Beck for leaving the most murderous, uh, police department in the nation. We want them to, we want the mayor to develop a recreation policy, because families, um, are financially burdened after one of their family members has been killed. Uh, we want to hold L A, uh, Police Commission out of police headquarters in the community at a time when folks are off work and out of school. I don't know if you realize it, but the commission meetings are held in the police department at nine o'clock in the morning, when none of us can be there. We want that changed. Uh, we want to, uh, appoint real people to the commission, people who work and live and are part of our community, not, you know, some corporate executives and, uh, and entertainment lawyers, right? Uh, we want to hold regular town hall meetings with black organizations, not just with the mayor's friends, but also with organizations that might be, uh, critical of his practices. Uh, policing over our kids, we just saw what happened in Anaheim, and this goes on daily, uh, in Los Angeles. And they're now putting up a, uh, a, a structure where they will be victimizing our youth even more by getting on trains and buses and giving out citations, and basically criminalizing our kids. Uh, I'm going to bring, uh, Jay, Jay Williams up to, uh, to make an announcement.
Thank you.
Just to add, as we have heard, we also work closely with families, and here we have a white student who was killed in police custody, and her family was not notified for two days, three or four days. And I love the Baptist Percy, who was murdered by a local Jew, and Chief Beck said, "I was wrong about him, it was okay, kill him." So, he's down to the next one. Chief is down, Chief Percy is down here. Please, I'm just watching.
Good morning. I'm listening. I'd like to ask a little bit about the horrific experience. It makes me sick every time. I think it feels short. My daughter, Marsha, was arrested March twenty-eight, twenty-sixteen, maybe about one o'clock in the morning. She was dead in hospital. All the police, they arrested her, were burying everything. She has a mental issue, some mental, you know. She gave them the information that she suffered from mental issues. They ignored that. They ignored that fact. They took it from one department to another department. And one officer told the other officer, "Keep an eye on the patient, they're getting kind of strange and odd." They ignored that. That was a Saturday that she got arrested. Sunday morning, she called me, Easter morning last year. And we called, and she called, she was gonna call me back later that evening when the family was together, so she could wish everybody, uh, happy Easter. And my sister's birthday lady said that, "So somebody wish her a happy birthday." I held my phone in my hand all day, so I wouldn't miss the call. She never called, I never got the phone. So Monday morning, I called the police station, you know, trying to see when I could go clear. But they told me they didn't have. Tuesday, she had a court date. I was there. They told me she wasn't there, didn't have. They didn't know why she wasn't there. But they reminded me. She died, she extorted me Sunday morning, I tried to talk to her. That's why I never think to talk to her. But as I'm at four, yes, before the other children, you know, find out when she's not there, they tell me they don't know where she is, they don't know why she's there. They were lying. She was asleep, she was dead. So I'm calling all day, all day, and they still telling the same thing. Wednesday morning, I did, and I called Thursday morning. They tell me they don't know where she is, they're trying to go there. They didn't find her. They were lying, she was dead, they extorted my dad. So I'm just calling, calling all day, and they say, "Hold on." The officer tells me, I went and called, I said, "My daughter, Marsha, was, okay, my daughter, she's, you know, arrested her." And they said, "Oh, yeah, the money?" And I said, "Yes." They said, "Hold on." Liz, she was calling twenty minutes, comes back and tells me, "Please, maybe get some more information, you know, this Washington man, they called me back." I do so. But you know, when I hear that, I'm in France, man, I'm in France, trying to figure out why this Washington man won't see me. The Washington man, he called me back, I'm calling him back, nigga, hour and a half. He's not available. They tell me, "Wait, he'll call me back." I do, he had to call me back, called me back again. They finally tell me, "Hold on, he'll be with me." I swayed on the phone for twenty minutes more, then he comes to the phone and he tells me, he wants me to take down the number and call and ask for investigations. And I asked him why I didn't call, investigations to find out where my daughter is, when you got arrested. He said, "Man, that's all I can do. I need you to call this man." I do, I'm calling down there. There was the cornerstone. Do you know, right today, I don't know what happened, my baby. They sent you numbers. I don't believe. They lied so much. They said, "She hung herself." Okay, she had mental issues. You guys knew that she wrote it down, she told you verbally, and you ignored all the facts. You ignored the facts. Right after I talked to her, she had a heart attack with a police detention officer. They had twenty minutes later, they found this military cell hanging. And the officer, when the officer found her, they did not try to resuscitate her. They stood there. So she did, just say, "Well, she did try to, she hung herself." She's there with the police. They say they had pictures protecting the service. Why didn't they try to protect her? Why didn't they try to help? Why didn't they do their job? You know why? Because they're the most murderous police department in the whole nation. And I have no trust. I would never trust the police. If anything violent was happening to me, I would not call the police. I would not call. They are still like, they're giving proof only their word, and who's gonna, am I gonna do anything? I don't believe them. They are giving you any proof that she did it herself, which I can tell them, they, she did it. She did not do it. They tell me they don't have cameras showing in the inside of the cell. But this is the most recently well-equipped jail, jail. So why doesn't it have cameras showing inside the cells? Only people at the door. Only people at the door, that's how far the cameras go. They don't have sense. So my recommendation is remodeling stations, find all these lying police, these murderous Let the community come in and police us. We can police ourselves. That's what we do. Stop the racism. Stop marking black and whites. Stop it. My daddy put in thirty-seven, thirty-four. That's the first day right there, this next month. I have no trust in the police, not also. Why didn't they know the time when she died? They related all the body. They were trying to get this guy to get, they just kind of let it happen. That's their reason. That's exactly what they're doing. They just talk at the, I don't know, two weeks ago, that they found the policy didn't do anything out of policy. She didn't die, the hands of another. You can't show me anything that. You can't show me anything. Because you don't have a picture, you have a video showing the inside of what happened in this cell. So, I don't know, I don't know anything. That was, she was my birthday gift, her birthday, it was the fourth month, it was the twelfth. I'm close. Precious, yes, gift, blessing from God, stolen. Five, I'll be back.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming forward. Our courage, our heart goes out to you, to support you, and our courage to come forward. Thank you.
Good morning. I want to thank you guys for having me here. And I'm here to support these parents and other families. I'm the grandmother Pete Percy. Pete was my first grandson, first grandchild period. And on June tenth, which was his grandmother's birthday, he was down here for a funeral. And they went to the liquor store on Brian Herson's lawsuit. And he called me at age seventeen, and he said, "Where are you? I wanna come and see what's going on with the law." I said, "You coming from dinner?" And I said, "He said, 'This guy here, the liquor store, might go to a club.'" And I said, "Be careful." At eight-thirty, we were home, we got a call that he had been shot. He was backing in, they, the passenger in the car backing into the liquor store with his friend. The two policemen came up from Brian Herson and asked him what was they doing. When the girl said, "We're just going to the liquor store to get something." The guy said, "What's in the backseat?" And the guy that was in the backseat said, "Oh, that's a marijuana container that I had, I have a heart." He said, "You wanna see it?" He said, "No, yeah." So he had a question, Scotty, put some on the ground. And the other guy got out and come around. So Pete made a statement, I understand he was a girlfriend, that's really helped out. So the guy that, the passenger in the police car said, "Did I hear you say something?" He said, "I was talking to my girl." He said, "Did I hear you say something?" He said, "Get out." So Pete was trying to get out because he had, pretty, he said, with his leg, and he just, he got up. And he held his seat, he got up like this, and he got out. He was shot here. He was shot in the back, that Pierce did a order all the way through. The last shot they shot him was in the buttocks. This policeman went to seventy-seven precinct and made a statement. See, he don't know who know who. He said, "I think I had a reaction with him before, because he's a smart ass. He had a smart ass mouth." Chief Beck made a statement, and on July seventh, that Pete was a gang, no, 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 got him a gang member. Pete had been in jail since he, in prison since he was seventeen. Recently, he was involved in a car accident with two grown men, and they told him that he take the rap, because he was a white, he wouldn't have to go. He told me that he was so hard, I said, "I'm afraid, because I've known him to kill people that's mixed, but I just don't take it." So he, I raised Pete. Pete's mother was, she died of rheumatism when he was eleven, and his sister here was four. And I raised Pete, he was raised, not in my home, he was raised in Texas. When I got the autopsy report a few weeks ago, and I saw that he did, Chief Beck made a statement on October sixth, saying that they never had to give up a video that was taken on a business. I have a copy of the paper that says he didn't have to give the video because they went in at three o'clock in the morning and took the video from the liquor store. They took it back that Monday, when he was on the thirteenth, and when they took the video back, Detective Ward is calling, I was in the liquor store, I was speaking, he said, "I didn't, I'm not, we're gonna give you a brand new box, because that one is not good enough for you. We'll give you a new box, so you can have a, you have a real clear one." But he never gave us the video, so I don't know what's happening. And I hope, I hope they will find justice, and I hope all of you looking for strength and I'm looking for justice. And I am trying to find in my heart to forgive Charles El Conlander, who killed my grandson.
I'm sorry, Father of my children.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, grandmother, thank you again, hearts and prayers are with you, thank you for your courage to come here. I'm sorry, go ahead, if you're quite a calm.
Hi, Michael Richardson.
Good morning. I just have a question for you guys. If you play lottery, and there was sixty million dollars in the pot, if you lose, guaranteed you may, you will go to win. But it was slightly elite. Get up, go to work every morning, tired, rob the theater, take call, would you do it? I wanna see, would you do it? Come on now, sixty million dollars, would you do it? I'm gonna tell you something, I would do it with no problem. I would do it with no doubt. The reason why I bring this up, this is why we have the type of crime that they want next to body. They can do these horrible things to our children and get away with it. They have that kind of support. Let me tell you something, Kamala Harris, a fact, we voted for her, she's a liar. We voted on her because the color of her skin. We thought that Kamala Harris was gonna get in office and save us from these types of things that were going on. She did not, she played us. She played, we can give Bruce and us, when my daughter was murdered by a mountain sheriff in Lost Hills, her remains were found eight months later in a ravine, five miles from the sheriff's station. In a cave, unclothed skeletal remains, raped. They said there was no findings, and now is the beginning of all familiar stories to keep you smart. So I'm gonna keep it brief, because it parallels the same way, same thing with the video. That officer, Captain Tom Martin, had the video surveillance in his drawer for six months. Said the video surveillance were not available, was not working that night. Steve Whitmore, who was the spokesperson for the sheriff at the time, when we asked, well, she was raped. Boy, you can't say that. Her clothes were found ten steps away from her. Well, it floods in that area, and the water lifted her clothes off her body and took them down again. So, no, ten, done. What they thought was, when my daughter, who was a four-point-old honors student from Cal State University, graduated with honors, was in Malibu acting strangely, when they found out she was from, right over here, hundred and eighty-six. Oh, I heard about that, maybe. We're gonna do what we want. This is gonna be a good old boy's day. So they kept telling the mother, "We're not gonna release her." Because what they did was, they took her purse, her car, her money, put it in the trunk of her car, impounded her car, took her from Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, where there is nothing but woods, wilderness, whole nine yards. They told her mother, "Deaf, we will not release her till the morning, no bus lines, no taxis, nothing." Well, her mother said, "Well, you know, I just wanna make sure you're gonna keep her, because if you're not, I'm gonna come pick her up." Now, but if you're gonna keep her till the morning, obviously, I'm gonna keep her till the morning, because I don't wanna wake up to a story saying her head chopped off in the building. Well, her head wasn't chopped off, but it was pretty horrific. And so they impounded her car with all her purse, cell phone, and money, and released her at twelve-thirty forty, twelve-thirty forty in the morning. and released her at twelve thirty-four, twelve thirty-four in the morning. With no way home. Did not call her mother, did not call me, did not call her grandmother. Her mother kept calling. It was around two o'clock. "Oh, she's doing fine. I'm looking at her right now. She's okay." Okay, great. Just have her call me when, you know, when she gets a chance. Well, that chance, that could be here. It never came. Same setup, same scenario. Now, for the second time, it ended with we found her remains in a ravine, clothed pretty much bare. So this starts me going to Office of Internal Affairs. Joe, Joe. They do a mock investigation to say that they care for the family and came up with none. Then they re-investigated and said, "Well, there was things that we couldn't do right." Okay, I asked for the FBI. They denied me twice. This is where your Senator Kamala Harris comes in. Denied me twice. I just wrote a simple letter around Christmas. Look, I look at you, you look exactly like my daughter. My daughter had a career like you. You represent us. I encourage you to investigate my daughter's case. Simple as that. She said, "I'll do it." Simple as that. I'm telling you, we spent thousands of dollars on sending, went, went home, but it was a simple two paragraph letter. And she said, "Okay, I'll do it." National media came along and said, "Oh, my God, this is great. We're gonna give breakthrough." Well, unbeknownst to us, I kept calling the FBI every four months. Let's go on. We can't do voting, information, and anything like that. Right after Kamala Harris got sworn in as your new senator. Because we were not supporting Kamala Harris as Attorney General. And that got whipped all in the Limerick area, all in the black community. So some smart person says, you know, this could really help you. If you get it out, that you're gonna support this case. She took it. And it did. We voted for it. I go on KGLA's radio, we try my statements and say, "You know what? It's not where you started, it's where you end up." She did good. Soon as she was sworn in, a week later, I got my letter from the Attorney General. Investigation had been concluded. We found nothing. Hey, so, I'm gonna sum it up really quickly, guys. Stop voting for people because of the color of their skin. Vote for people who's gonna fight for you and what you call. Kamala Harris is not gonna fight for us because she don't have the same issues we have. Hey, she don't go through what we go through. She's never seen a sheriff get behind her and before he can get out of the car, his daughter's cleaning up, and he jumping out like, you know, with a M16. She don't understand that. So she's not gonna fight for us. All these people we put in office because of the color of their skin. Yeah, they about Turkey, they do housing. Like, it's time to come to the media among the minds when there's real issues at hand. You know who should be investigating our cases? With independent resume, Office of Internal Affairs, and all of them? All those people that sit right there. Not no black man suck. Not no white man suck. I'm gonna say, I'm a man. If I be going about this big, you give me that kind of power. And it all, it's all. Everybody talk about me, saying, "Oh, black people just searching for money. They want a lawsuit." Where is Lee Bach at right now? Where is he going? Where is Paulson not at right now? All right, so there's so true. And the years of corruption. I thank you guys for your time. You can follow my daughter's website on dundundundun. Bring My Treats Justice dot org. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our hearts is prayer with you, Father.
Thank you.
Is it, Mr. Green?
Yeah. Cynthia and I go a lot ways because we go through the same kind of work. We go out to corrupt police officers. Recently, my son Michael and I were hired by a mother of his thirteen-year-old daughter. It was near an Alamo County Police Officer when he had wrestled a thirteen-year-old child and was pulling him into a backpack. That's not our client. Our client is a thirteen-year-old girl. When the officer lost his control and lost his cool and was not properly trained, that Chief Beck fired that gun, could have killed the thirteen-year-old child. Then Chief Beck was said, "We're not gonna train." Chief Beck had promised he'd be trained for years. Yet the officers are still poorly and badly trained. How is it that a top living in Anaheim loses his school when thirteen-year-old kids are walking supposedly over his grass? He should have waited for Anaheim officers to cut to the scene. He always killed the child. We're here because we're concerned that over the years, the chief of police promises reforce, but never delivers with the reforce because the officers continue to abuse the community. African-American and Native community are always at the bad end of justice. There is no justice. And this thing is only gonna get worse unfortunately because now we have Attorney General in Washington, Jeff Sessions, a racist man who has learned this man to everything that the Department of Justice did in the past to police the police departments. You're not gonna see that sentence anymore. The police are gonna get even wilder against people of color because we have a man in power who appoints, did it there, and races through positions. And so in our capacity here, we applaud you for the work that you're doing because it has to be done. And my heart goes out, sir. Because this is real, this is real suffering that people go through after the police take a life. And thank God, Officer Ferguson in LAPD Officer Ferguson in Anaheim, thank God he didn't take a child's life. However, the Anaheim police, right, they circled the wagons around Officer Ferguson and arrested the kids instead of arresting Officer Ferguson. It's gonna be a, I'm making lots of investigation. They're not gonna file criminal charges against Officer Ferguson by the Anaheim police. But this is where you can, the community can put Chief Beck and the Police Commission on notice that this was not the first time that LAPD Officer Ferguson brandished a gun at a child. We're investigating another incident that had occurred two years earlier when again he brandished the gun against a teenager. So if Chief Beck and the Police Commission are gonna do their job, they're gonna fire this man because he has no business being a police officer. He lacks professionalism, lacks authority, lacks good judgment, and again, have been poorly trained by guess who, Chief Beck. Thank you.
Can you remind us the date of the incident and just give that for the record?
It happened on Tuesday, which was, Michael, it was Tuesday. February twenty-one of this year.
In Anaheim by LAPD officers. How do the LAPD officers?
Ferguson's last name, yes. Keith, thank you.
What was it? Kevin?
J. Ferguson.
Kevin J. Ferguson.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Oh, honey, come on. Yeah, we're down to the regular two-minute public comments piece. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Hon Thon. I'm a resident of Los Angeles County. I work with a group called the Stop LAPD Sign Protection. A lot has been stated, and I think we need to just take a step back and acknowledge that all these murders and killings happen because murder by police is an awesome. It is absolutely a policy to kill because they can. We were talking about LAPD as the most murderous police department in the country, but when you look at the numbers since 2011, there's this almost very morbid competition going on between the LAPD and the other sheriff's department. In 2011, the LAPD and the other sheriff's department tied in killing the most people. In 2012, LAPD left the nation, and the sheriff's department came out with a review. In 2013 and 2014, the other sheriff's department led a campaign killing the most people. In 2015 and 2016, the LAPD led a campaign killing the most people. So what we have is these killing fields that are out there. And when you look at Pasadena, when you look at Santa Monica, when you look at Long Beach, I mean, you get the picture of how morbid and perverse these divisions are. And they're killing because we keep on giving them the tools to commit these crimes. We keep on giving them the equipment to keep on killing them. Tanks, helicopters, grenade launchers, rocket launchers, you name it. Mine sweaters, long-range utility devices. And then technology that they have and the programs that they have. So what we have is that these agencies act more as counterinsurgency forces and counterterrorism forces rather than what we have been told as something to protect the insurgency. And now the sheriff's has announced that they're gonna start using drones. I don't know how many people in the audience know that the other sheriff's department announced that they're gonna start using drones. Drones are killing machines. We have to be very clear about it. Drones, in technical language, are called weapon delivery platforms. The state of North Dakota already passed a law two years ago where police drones can be equipped with rubber bullets, cases, and various other forms of weaponry. So I, I, I would stop right there and when time is up, that this body can make a difference. This body can play, can interfere. This body can very clearly and categorically reject the use of this technology. So we ask you, that please, the LAPD human relations commission case, to take a very strong position and reject the use of drones right here.
Okay, next up, I have Val Carlson. Val Carlson. And this, you, so you can kind of get to it.
Good morning, Deputy Commissioner.
Good morning.
My name is Val Carlson. I'm speaking today for the Freedom Movement Party. I have worked as a lawyer for four years in the state of Washington. I'm already doing civil rights, civil liberties, discrimination issues. Moving here about a year ago, I have been shocked by the consequence of police murders and refusals to indict or penalize any of these murderous activities that law enforcement had committed, many of which filmed in great detail for the whole world to see. Today, I propose to you that you seriously consider revenging your power to create strong, elected civilian review boards over all of the police agencies in this county. These would be agencies that have the power to investigate, discipline, and to separately let the special prosecutor prosecute the police who have these crimes. You live in peril of crimes with the new Trump administration's desire to increase police presence and ICE presence throughout our communities. Things are gonna get worse by far. These are not times when police community relations are going to improve. We need to elevate the community's position to being a target of the police so they really do serve us. And so when they commit crimes against us, they are prosecuted. That might change some of it. Probably we need a revolution and change all of it. But if you have a separate commission that has the power to see all of the information, make the decisions about the discipline, and then actually do the prosecuting. There's a terrible conflict of interest between the prosecutors and the police because of this reason, this starvation in all of the other criminal cases. So that is another reason why all of this is desperately needed. The story you heard today explained all the effort that the community has to take control and really wish we did that. I have some printed material about tissue and more, so I won't do this.
Thanks for that kind of information. Thank you very much. I said, "God, Lord, I apologize."
Um, so, good morning. My name is Gloria, and I'm an organizer with the Justice Coalition. And I just wanted, um, for the, I just want to say that if the Los Angeles Sheriff's Oversight Commission could be granted these, the powers that I'm about to speak about, and also the LAPD department, it would help establish a real commission instead of a fake, not doing anything like LAPD already does. One, would be power to establish policy for the department. Two, power to review, finalize the LASC and LAPD budget that is presented to the board of supervisors, spending determinants, program, and policy priorities. Three, create and maintain a new, fair, transparent, accessible, and enter having a complete process for the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department and LAPD, both in communities and in custody. Including having the OIGD and the Civil Grant Commission work for and report to the Oversight Commission. And four, adopt the Family Rights Platform governing treatment of victims' families after use of force. So I have these documents. I don't know if you guys received any or I would be pissing them off. Um, so, um, with the, with what has happened in the communities of color with law enforcement and with police brutality, we've created a family bill of rights. And, um, for me, it would be really important for this to actually be created because I've had someone really close to me be beaten by the police and of course, something happens to the officer. And many stories that we've heard from family members where their children have been killed and nothing has ever happened. So it's kind of like what you expect us to do, you know, when people rebel and things like this happen is because of the fraud and, um, the fraud department that we have.
Thank you very much. And with this, you?
Hi, my name is Alice. I'm a student at Three Oak High School and also an organizer for RDC. Oh, I just wanna talk about how there's been in the past five years together that six hundred million dollars are going for the patrolling at MetroCard. And only twenty percent of that is going for giving students from pre-k to college, free bus passes. So a lot of students rely on that to get to school. And with that increasing the, um, the money going for the patrolling, they're also increasing different, um, utilization. And arrest for petty crimes such as kids needing a bus because they can't afford it or they aren't given the bus passes to be able to go back to school. So they're giving, getting a little more access to the tardies in school. But when kids aren't, you know, just being, um, like, they're being harassed by these officers. So they're being pulled off buses when they're just trying to leave the school door. And if you're not given those your bus passes, you're going to have to go to work after school. And it's going to, if you're late, you're not gonna have that. So the kids are gonna be seeing the buses. So basically, what I'm proposing or demanding is to share free metro pass to all students in LA counties who need one pre-k through college through a restriction of twenty percent of the MTC's contracts with LA County Sheriff's Department, LSC, and Long Beach County Department. But the specific request that county supervisors champion, affirm, champions this on the NTC.
Thank you very much. We do have sandwiches and water in the back, so please feel free to get them. Next up, I've got Tahida Shakur. Tahida Shakur? And after her will be Chantel Prado. Okay? And after her, Karla Calabria.
My name is Chantel Shakur. I'm a youth organizer with Justice Coalition. I'm running backwards away from danger, but my feet are and cannot be fast enough. The group of boys got me and with every kick, I see how this kid have all been different. With everybody of my shirt being ripped, I can see myself found so many police reports looking at the walls of the Assistant Principal Office during lunchtime, like I had an issue, like people need to save people me. I never saw this in counseling. One of the boys, one of the group of boys, he's getting brutally beaten by his foster mom. Middle school taught both of us a valuable lesson. Middle school taught me, my pride and my pain doesn't matter unless the police turn up. Middle school taught him, the only time he matters is when he is a problem. I got up from the ground. I got up from the ground. I was left behind after that attack that day. With my pride on the ground, it has been almost eight years and I'm still struggling to get myself back. So I need one experiment when other people talked about, when they talked about having, like, immigration workers and things like that. See, the thing that had happened to me could have all been proven to me even had two years ago. We decide to arrest the school police. They don't care. They don't care anything about us. The only thing that lasted is that we're all on police support. It looks like they're doing a job. But one time, gave me one accident. What do you want to happen? This is traumatic thing. And this, this story is a story of me. It had to come out. If we would have had two years ago, we would have seen what was wrong with this voice. It is not my job and it is not my job as a whole girl to teach something that is supposed to be paid to you. That is not my job. And yet, I still try to see what was wrong with it. No one wakes up and be like, "I'm gonna call harm to others." It's murder, it's sin.
You said, "T" and "S"?
Yeah, "T" and "S" we necessarily.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Hi, good morning, Chantel. I'm an organizer with the OIGD and I think we have a decision. So on Tuesday, my personal experience, I called a community or officer in order to accommodate a problem. Not only did the problem escalate, but it escalated because of a police officer. The police officer lost school and he had to yell. And his rookie, the new generation of police officers who's training, yelled at him to calm down. This is our community police officers. So not only do we see officers losing their cool time and time again, but it usually happens to deathly worse within six to 10 minutes, or six to 10 seconds of initial contact, and that's from the data we've been collecting. Officers then claim that the victim is suicidal, claims of mental health issues. And yet, never, never do they ever call any mental health services. How could they be so suicidal and yet have no services ever called? We're putting too much responsibility on our police officers. They're overwhelmed and they jump to conclusions when it's not necessary because of this stress. They often say, "Grit your waistband, grab the weapon, had a weapon" when it was really a cell phone, a cigarette, or nothing. This is all reflected in our data over and over and over again. We can't, we can't do this. We're putting too much on our police officers. We keep pumping money into those police schools that doesn't have the structure or the capacity to handle it all. When are we going to stop and actually start putting money into our community, investing on structure that already exists? This is unnecessary. Thank you.
Next up is Karla Calabria.
I appreciate all the Congressmen who are willing to defend the main thing. My name is Farid Al Salamouay in Denver, and I'm also the organizer of the Free and Social Party here in Los Angeles, who is up in South LA. And we're a social activist organization fighting for human and civil rights for over 50 years now. In the current political climate, when our president is both the manufacturer and the supporter of racist attacks against immigrants, Muslims, and people of color, we, the people, must demand that law enforcement was carried out the duty to which they are sworn, which is to protect the people of Los Angeles. To do this, they must stop cooperating with ICE, declare all publicly owned buildings safe spaces in the city of Los Angeles a sanctuary city. Seize and provide ICE with identification and immigration status of both apprehended and apply the existing policy 100%. Although some policies do exist to protect civilians from police brutality, many officers opt to act within punitive, with and without their badges. Such is the recent case that some folks have already spoken about in Anaheim, where an officer, the LAPD officer, fired his weapon during an altercation with a 13-year-old. During the altercation, the law enforcement was responsible not to arrest the attacker, who now is on the screen, but to arrest other folks who were either defendant, the young man, or protester. These same policies that protect these abuses and allow the systematic terrorizing of our communities and working people of color by police departments, with the vacuum of the Trump administration, also generating and protecting abuses against undocumented, trans, mentally ill, and homeless individuals. And this must stop today. And this can stop with the control of the police by the community with an elected civilian review board. Thank you.
Next up is Kim Wadyo. And after her, Aria Martin. And Gary Farah.
Good morning. Thank you very much for this hearing. We've been at all the hearings and I really appreciate your efforts. I think we still don't want to compromise and have to be missed and apologize for that also, but appreciate your efforts. I think quickly, just hope that this leads to really significant change. We have 169 different commissions in the county of Los Angeles. And one thing we found is that most of them are lacking substance and power. So we count, not to put a lot on your shoulders, but we count a little lack to really exert our power differently. We've been studying use of force. I'm working with families whose loved ones have been killed by use of force for several years. And all of us, the Justice Coalition, have experienced detention, incarceration, and some of those deportation since we were young people. So our experience is coming from direct police contact. But since the last couple of years, we've also gathered some evidence to prove you that comes directly from law enforcement, that speaks to the truths that the community is spitting. One is that we gave you all the use of force homicides going all the way back from 2000 through July 15, 2015. By April, we have the rest of the cases of the present time. This is the most exhaustive list of every single use of force homicide in LA County. It shows some very troubling factors. First, it points out that we cannot get this data from law enforcement because they refused, even with public record advocates, to share with us. We had to get our data first from the stories we collected from our own family members and their families. And then corroborated that, sorry, with data we got from the coroner's office. It's criminal negligence now with state law that law enforcement does not release this data and these numbers. It also shows that even by March of 2016, and now it's over 700, but by March of 2016, we know that 666 people were killed by law enforcement in LA County. We know that 98% of them were male, mostly young men under the age of 14. That 82% were black and Latino. An example of the racial disparities, 90% of our county is African-American, but 28% of those killed by law enforcement are African-American. We know that in about 40% of the cases, there were mental health conditions, and Trump already said this. We got all the use of force reports from the district attorney's office, and it proves some very important things to us. We've quoted all of the data now from 2009 to 2015, done by community volunteers and family members. And we'll have that data to use soon also. But it revealed that in every single case, the same paragraph existed in what the district attorney's report said. That their report, their analysis was based entirely on what they got from law enforcement. It proves that the memorandum of understanding, which we can also get you, that they have with law enforcement, all 57 law enforcement agencies in LA County, is that agreed with by the district attorney's office that they will not investigate any use of force until they get the report from law enforcement. Sometimes as much as a year, two year and a half later after the incident. By then, it's a cold case. They send a team out, and I'll finish, I'm sorry. They send a team out on the night of the incident or day of the incident, and that's the extent of their investigation. And then finally, that this memorandum of understanding has to be eliminated if we're gonna have any oversight locally, but that we also have to push for a state department of justice to create a special prosecutor. We cannot expect our lawyer, who makes all the other cases with these law enforcement agencies, to ever investigate any of the law. So we want to thank you, Justice Coalition, for being an anchor for this hearing, but also for being so participatory in all of the hearings we have. Two more that we hope that you'll participate in. And we also like to get all of the data that we have so we can absolutely write a report and submit it and we'll use it in what we cherish. So we really appreciate your data as well as your participation. The other thing that we did get from the general's data, which I get you, that we think is really harmful, is that LA County, of course, created, constructed, and then exported to the rest of the state and the world, the war on gangs, which is a war on minority political color. And so, as part of this, we need to talk about it. This man and gang, and this is gang, and this is gang, and this is gang. And we're seeing where over and over again, it's gang in and off of some of their politics use of force homicides.
Do you have a report on that as well?
We do, and we have state legislation, some which we passed, that law enforcement's intentional not implementing. And some of these, this year, that we can really use the resources to help and push forward.
So we want to receive everything I'm saying. A little question here. Can you come to report on the next hearing?
Oh, for sure. We'll be at, oh, yeah.
I definitely want to press you, since you apologized for not being able to force my comments back, and you can see it all about. Thank you so much. Good morning.
Um, how are you doing, Marcy? Where do I start? I have a problem with LAPD and Charlie Beck. We're seeing continuous things happen, and with him being there, nothing is done. I have a problem with Marcy Wilson being in a jail facility that I believe is an $800,000 facility, State of the Art. Is that surveillance cameras? Where are those videos? Why won't Chief Beck release those videos? 10 months? 10 plus months? Can't tell me that in 10 months, it takes you that long to say the police were not involved. Their agency? No, it doesn't work that way. They're under his watch. The incident in Anaheim. This officer has prior problems with being on the police force. And I'm finding out with another child. This is still Charlie Beck's watch. I have a problem with LA Sheriff's Department, Levi Tanaka. How are they pleading guilty to corruption under the watch of Marcy Richardson? Now, Coach Kamal Ears says that she will open the case, now it's a dead case. I have a problem with that. How much longer will you continue to let this happen under the watch of Charlie Beck? Is it not your child? I don't have any children. I would have been Marcy's. I would have been Marcy's Wilson. I put myself in a mindset of, well, I don't want them, me, I don't want them to anyone else. How long are we gonna sit around and let Chief Beck sit up there at LAPD headquarters with a smirk on his face and continue to do what he's doing? That is my question to everybody that has any problem with people being mistaking and not doing anything about it.
Good morning, folks. Garrett Farah, I'm a parent here in Los Angeles, representing kids struggling with crimes, juvenile offenses, and other work. Used to work right down the street before the COVID caught us. Now I represent a lot of kids that are down in town with juvenile court. I'm also the past president of California Association of Black Lawyers and Attorney Law Association. Anyway. As a lawyer, we have an organization that watches over lawyers, suspended lawyers who take advantage of the public, steal their money, whatever. There are organizations that watch over doctors to make sure that they don't mistreat people. There's no organization that watches over bad police to make sure that those people either get out of the work that they're doing because it's not fit for or they have to pay some penalties. So there's some major changes that we need to take, but in order to see that these bad cops are held accountable. One of them, obviously, is that prosecution of use of force, this is taken out of the district attorney's offices around the state of California. Some people might see that as too much of a restructuring, but the same thing did happen with prosecution of black jobs, for instance. The DA's office messed it up so much, put the fathers in jail or trying to work to support their kids, that they just took a lot of the DA's office, including the attorney general's office. That same thing can be done with police prosecutions or investigations of police use of force. Use of force, so that's one thing that may take a lot of legislative work, but it should be done. And what I was talking about, Kamal, I have to need to also talk about Jackie Lacy, obviously, who was a lawyer. For me, as I said, I'm a lawyer. I grew up in the same neighborhood she did, but, you know, I can't support her lack of prosecution. And the other thing is that in the United States, we put too much emphasis in law enforcement. I'll just put one more point for our lead. And first, they call them real health situations. When people have a problem with a child or a relative who's, you know, acting crazy, they call the police. There's no one else to call. We need, in the United States of America, not just LA, not just California, to start making it so that there are agencies to call. Make social work somewhere where you can get a good job, like the police with their pensions and their unions and, you know, all those benefits they have. I think those kinds of benefits needs to go to social workers so we don't need so many of this. And again, that's gonna take a lot of legislative effort to better reduce incidences of police violence, for example.
Thank you so much. Can you return? Are you ready? And it's about noon, a little afternoon, so if people want to get filled out more forms, please do so. One in your firm.
I want to just say, morning. Good morning. I'm coming here to just report what I saw when I went to the LA Police Commission meeting, which was, it's a very intimidating environment. You're trying to complain about the police while you're in a room flanked by police. And they are lined up along the wall, all around you. And I see these people, you know, I saw Ms. Lisa and other people just putting their hearts out to the commission. And some of them were asleep, they were yawning, they would get up and leave during testimony. It was very non-responsive. And it just made me realize that they're supposed to represent the community and they seem very annoyed by our community when we show up and try and voice our dissent. And also, in terms of, I gotta say... And also, in terms of, I gotta say about Laquisha Wilson too. If we can find seven planets in Travers One, solar system somewhere around the V S, I believe we can find the tech on Laquisha Wilson. I believe that we can find the tech on what happened with Fred and Mary. I'm just trying to tell you, we have the technology. Just so you know, I didn't do any term share or nothing, so I do know the Robin equation, I know that we can do those kind of things. I did, I know, here we go. So, investigation, and I really encourage the commission to look into the people who have the CCC TV, I see you, the CCC TV contract with the LAPD, and also with the Sheriff's Department. And also, we need to be mindful of what they're doing for themselves. Everybody got a movie now, a new Chicks movie, and we're not supposed to fall back in love with the L.A. Sheriff's Department like back in the eighties with Quantrill John. I didn't like it then, and I don't like it now. And I'm just, I'm here to plead with y'all, to please. Remember, these are real human beings that are being dealt with, and I don't feel like that that's the way that we're treated when we deal with the police commission. And I would just encourage y'all to do your job and protect us from the police, because they're not gonna protect us, sir. And they need to learn how to be the adults in the situation, and de-escalate things.
Thank you so much.
Hello? Good morning. Fine, I'm coming here as, as a victim of police brutality. This coming May, it's gonna be the tenth anniversary of the May riots, what happened in Marquette Park. I got shot twice. And I was there, and a lot of us who experienced that trauma continue to have a trauma. So, in the coming May, you're gonna have a lot of former organizations, like they were back then in two thousand seven, that they blamed the youth, because the youth were quote-unquote "agitators." And at that time, we had the mayor, Yara Rosa, who was in El Salvador while this shit happened. But what the, what the media didn't cover was that when people were marching in Marquette Park, the sheriffs and the pents, they were already stationed in Marquette Park. They were already in riot gear. So you ask yourself, why will the police be in riot gear on a peaceful demonstration? Why would they already, like, they had the whole block ready? But the media won't tell you that the reason why what happened on May 1st, two thousand seven, that the LAPD used all of us demonstrators as guinea pigs, so that they didn't get funding for the counter-terrorism that Homeland Security was providing. So in order for them to get funding, they had to come up with a plan, for them to see if it was gonna plan, if it was gonna work. And they had all of us as their guinea pigs. So you ask yourself, why would an elderly man, who just goes to the park and rests and had nothing to do with the demonstration, he just goes there and rests? Why was he being shot at? Why was he being forced at? That was two thousand, that was two thousand seven, I got shot twice. Twenty-ten, I was in the city hall protesting the rent increase. At the time, the president of the council was Eric Garcetti. So when we, when the city increased the rent, a lot of us were actually against that. So, what happened, I got tased, I got tased in city hall because we were protesting the rent increase. I got sent to jail, I got, I got, I was given a felony, actually a lynching charge. In our community, it's a lynching charge, this is tomorrow, right? So, I'm, I'm, I could go on and on, but I just want to let you know that, that this shit has been continuing going on and on. My trees, my heart's blown out to you. But if we really are serious about the police violence going on, we really have to calm your guys. You guys are basically, you guys can be our ears and eyes. And so, our these voices, and the voices that you're gonna hear in different communities, we really depend on you guys for us to, to talk about that. You got this, if you want, to take away the power from the police departments, take away the power from the Attorney General. And that'd be, we gotta have an engaging and horizontal relationship, where the communities gotta be hand in hand. So, please, keep these ideas and thoughts in your guys' mind, and we hope to keep them forward.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Billies. Helen Jones. Helen Jones. Behind him will be Jorge, Kim Delia, and Bruce Coggs.
This is my son, my boy. He got murdered in the city jail in two thousand nine. I'm sorry. He got murdered in the city jail in two thousand nine. And the Sheriff's Department also went over the OR review. They all know who murdered my son, more often than that was a law. And since nineteen, in the nineteen sixty's, when they built the county jail, there was only one or two suicides, all the way up to two thousand nine. In two thousand nine, it was eight kind of suicides. And my baby was one of them. And I've been fighting since two thousand nine. It's just him and other inmates that would be in that county jail. This is his day, this is not somebody just went in the county jail. This is what I went to march earlier and took these pictures, my baby. I also have his, this is from his, where his body, how many times he was hit, in his body, how many scars he had. This is his head, where he'd been hitting the head so many times, hit it in his body, he busted his liver, busted his kidney, busted his pancreas. He hit my baby in the head so hard, it was before they got the blood clot was in. And I've been fighting, trying to get justice for John since two thousand nine. And I'm on the case, been tied up in a court since, because they don't want anybody to know that. It's a lot of babies that lost their lives up here, and a lot of, John Lee committed a crime. He got, he got put in jail, so they were standing next to somebody, had something on them. But you know, everybody getting thrown in the jail because of the way the system is. And if you don't have the money to get your kid a lawyer to help you get him out, it is what it is. Everybody, I was raised in Watts, I was raised, I was born in nineteen sixty-five when I was here. I was born, I was raised here, and he was too. So all I'm just trying to, I've been trying to get that for him since that time. And everybody, official, everybody looking the other way, other way. Or, or, like Leviak, like he said, I didn't know that this was going on. How you didn't know that this was going on? And I filed a lawsuit against you in two thousand ten, saying the name, the officer on the three thousand floor called the three thousand boys is the one that murdered my son. And this, and this case is called Scanning Day, when they tore the bar code system. That's it, my son was the inmate, that they said that they, they were, they were in his room, the same thing was in his room at the time that he was dead. One officer said, I went to the gym, took a shower. The other one said, I went to, I mean, took the gym, went exercise. And then after that, I came back, took a shower. So all of them saying that they wasn't there, but they bar code showed them that they was in my, my baby's room at the time, he was dead. And when they called the paramedics and stuff to come see him, his body was already in rigor mortis. So they trying to tell them, and I'm like, this, this kid in rigor mortis? So, all I'm trying to do is, is justice for John, and is justice for all the other kids. Because I don't care if you're forty, fifty years old, you still your kids. You gonna love them till you close your eyes, just like I love mine. And my case been caught up in the system since that time. And I'll be just, just one second, please. Just a decider. They wanna come to the table, and you know, of course, how lawyers work. If you, they been having, you tied up this long, you not gonna win. So just do this, and just get this out the way. But it's not your child. And when it ain't your child yet, and then they try to say, oh, we gonna bring you, you take this, but that's the only way y'all let us fight. We gotta go through the civil part before the criminal part. But y'all, you have, you know, you had to come arrest us, and you haven't even proved we've done the thing. Everybody. So all I'm trying to do is, is just get justice for John and the other inmates that lost their lives in here. You still, you never tracked it, you never came back home. So I just, just wanted to just say that.
I have two quick questions for you. Can you repeat your son's name? And thank you for sharing this with us. I know it's a call an incident, but I know this is your child, and as a mother, it's more than an incident. So can you share with us again what his name is?
His name is John Thomas Ford III. He was twenty-two years old when he was in the city jail.
And let me make sure that I'm understanding correctly. Did they call this a suicide, they're calling this a suicide?
They tried to call it suicide. But, but they tried, what they did was, after death, they put the loose around his neck. Also, the loose, the little loose that they took, a few of the blankets that's in the county jail, those thick blankets, they said he ripped that apart. You know, you can't rip those apart.
That was, that spiked the blows to the head.
It swiped the blows, shook the head and everything, he was all the scars. Busted his kidney, busted his liver, pancreas. He muscled his back that, yeah, the two-inch muscled, the muscled back, they even bust that. You know what I'm saying? So, how that's a suicide? And then even in the autopsy report, nowadays, they were admitting that he was murdered. You know what I mean? They saying now, okay, he was beaten to death, but they don't want anybody to know that.
I have a question, do you have the names of any of the sheriff deputies?
I have, yes, ma'am, I have all their names, I have paperwork, I can even, I even got a second autopsy report. And he was working with the Sheriff's Department, gave him a fake autopsy report.
Can you list any of those names right now?
Yes, one officer's name is, uh...
Write it down for us.
Okay, Clifford Yates.
Clifford Yates.
Clifford Yates, the officer that beat him, the reason why my son was murdered, because officer's name, Mark Romero, that's still working for the Sheriff's Department right now.
Is this my son, Mark Romero?
Mark Romero.
Romero?
Mark Romero. And in his deposition, in his deposition, he, he admitted that this is not the first case that been wronged on him. This is the third. And one thing, they waited till he got to the prison to file charges, even though they knew they were gonna kill him in the county jail, so he waited till he got when he was born. But this officer on Marshall Court beat my son and broke his hand. And his, the deputy that worked side by side with him at thirty-one hundred is one of the officers that killed my son. So it was retaliation, but when he broke his hand, so beat my son, and he didn't beat another inmate too. So I had paperwork, I had all deposition papers, I had all, both of them. I got my own autopsy, I got my own private autopsy, and all the time, they was working with him, he was working with the county, the county Sheriff's Department too, the county court, he was working with him. So he gave him a fake autopsy, because he said he don't see no blows in my baby's head or nothing, but you see, here is him.
Yeah, if you can give us your contact information. So that we can be able to definitely, the law specifics, and we can still have the names of some of the officers who were there. Thank you so much. A heart of prayers, and I would say, the secret of life, absolutely.
Good afternoon again. I am a resident, I have a home in Englewood, and a home in South Central. So I find myself operating as an activist in both of those communities. I first want to lift up the young couple that was shot last year while sleeping in their car in Englewood. Laquisha Michael and Mark Quentin Samuel. They were, when the police contacted them, the police and the mayor admits that these people were asleep in their car when they were shot. And to this day, we have not received any type of response from the city. No, you know, it's an ongoing investigation, quote-unquote. And we, we don't want to live as if we are in the Middle East and being terrorized every day, right? But that's pretty much what happens. So, we have a, a new understanding of what the war on drugs is like, or is about, according to Michelle Alexander, and there's been a new Gen Pro. And we are aware that this U.S. government has a structural design to imprison. I say, also, to kill, to genify black people. Some of my friends in the past have said, oh, Trudy, this is all about conspiracy theories. They were ahead. Well, now, all of the reports that are coming out are pretty much verifying what it is that I've been said, I was saying all along. So what would have to be comatose to not understand what we need? Just a second, please. What we do not need is what Beck is calling for now with the more robust policing. What we do not need is gay reduction programs that are run by the same people that are criminalizing gay men or people who are, you know, are considered gay members. What we also do not need is more summer basketball games between our kids and the police that killed them and incarcerate them. But what we do need is number one, the police not need to stop killing us. That's number one. Number two, and this is not rocket science, everybody knows, that what we need is jobs. I want everyone to understand that, well, the, the county and, and LAPD is asking for billions and billions of dollars to police us. They are not saying, forget about the money for policing, let's bring more jobs into those communities. And we need real mental health specialists that can go in and work with our community. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you so much. Hold on, is that you? Hold on.
Yes, this has been here to put my brothers and sisters, powerful people. God bless everyone here. I just wanted to give them a few words I want. Say too much, you know, this is going on already, it's a little bit too much, but... What I can't say is that our young brothers and sisters, they are trying, they are trying to be a part of something and work, and make a change, and be of change. But since we're in the communities that we're from, it's still hard for some people to make that change because there's, there's still parts in the community because of the neighborhood, or their background. No matter how much change they've made, it's still, it's still a problem. Like, no, you can't be here, you don't belong here. But what are you doing here? Well, I'm already looking for a job. And I think it's very important for you guys to be here, and for the people to be here. Thank you so much for having this movement here. And I hope that teachers and educators and people out in the panel will bring more change to the situation. I just want to express some, some teachers, some parents, you know, I feel, for the kids, and it's not a kid's fault, you know, you got nothing else running around. Robbing somebody of something, robbing, seeing what we're gonna do next. And instead of trying to be a part of this here, we're all brothers and sisters. You know, so just want to say thank you for your time and God bless.
Thank you. Thank you so much, too.
God bless you too.
God bless you too. I thought I'd hear it. And I'd like Angela James and Gregory Brown.
I'd like to give my time to Ms. Angela James.
All right.
Good afternoon. I, uh, really wanted to thank all of those who are present by the bar. And I really wanted to come here to raise the issue of the overpolicing of youth in and around our schools. And now the increased presence of, uh, police on metro transportation. Together with the lack of accountability, uh, this really has resulted in terror of our communities, basically. You know, at least I'm not prosecuted when on or off duty, they're not held accountable for their violent actions against community members and in particular youth. That results in terror. And so the very, any, every interaction is permanent with fear and terror in our communities. And so, um, I wanted to highlight the degree to which the impact of that fear has been a consequence for our children. You know, we, there's a wealth of, of evidence and research on the cortisol response that results from fear. And the cortisol response, the hormonal mess in the brain, doesn't just dissipate immediately. It goes throughout your body for the rest of the day. So when our children encounter police on the metro passing them about a two-dollar fare, did they arrive at school, or when they arrived at school and get frisked and shook down and asking their backpacks for the Sharpies and so forth? They arrived at school to be learning with short-term memory loss, with, uh, corticopulmonary control, with, um, longer-term neurological impact. And that ultimately impacts their health. So our children are subjected in ways that impacted their learning and their behavioral response. Our teachers have to cope with that. And our parents, myself included, have to then cope with that. And I would like to respectfully, just to assert that we consider this a public health crisis in addition to a social justice issue. And that though these systems are separate, they really are, um, late.
Yeah, you do, if you want to. One more time, you do actually have two more minutes if you'd like to use two. Where you finished, you have two, you have two additional minutes if you'd like to use.
Well, I, I, I said it all, though.
And I just wanted to ask two questions. One, you are Dr. Angela James, who researches this, right?
Yes.
Okay. So this is your area of expertise. Um, the second question, you mentioned Sharpies. Can you, um, you mentioned police searching schoolchildren for Sharpies. So can you elaborate on what it is they're searching for and what that looks like? And, uh, the random searches that she needs?
So currently in LUSD, there are policies of random searches. And I must tell you that those random searches don't occur, um, in communities, uh, nor outside of black and brown communities, high poverty communities. And they also don't occur within schools randomly. So honors classes are rarely randomly searched. Um, and, uh, you know, charter schools are kind of exempt from some of these rules. But the schools that our children go to are. And what the random searches mean is that in the middle of the lesson, algebra, English, all the topics that we bemoan are children being, you know, not competitive with other places. In the middle of their lessons, they are asked to exit the classroom, open their backpacks, and be subjected to searches. Our children.
And is it daily?
Daily, there are random searches. So even when they are not searched, your particular class, you are daily threatened with the possibility of search.
So who conducts the searches? Is that the school police or the teachers?
The teachers do not. Um, they are generally administrators, but there is often a school police or policing around the incidents. Um, but they are typically administrators. And things like, the school supplies most of us purchase for our children, highlighters, Sharpies, things like that, whiteout. That was a staple in our, uh, in school back in the days of typing. Those are confiscated. Lotion, hand sanitizer, confiscated. Really dangerous things like sanitizer.
Just a quick second question. So there was a recommendation from the YJC organizer that there be free fairs on the metro for pre, pre K all the way through college.
I am arguing that the very presence of police on metro and public truck transportation represents a public health concern for our children.
So keep them all on.
The very presence.
We agree with that too. We also just want free passes on that.
Yeah, yeah. So, so if there's free passes, then we don't need to criminalize fear, should we? Uh, the very presence of police on those metro, when our children are on their way to school, represents a critical problem for their learning after they arrive.
And you mentioned school police. Can you say what these policing units are?
So school police within LUSD are typically pulled from the race of LAPD. However, they basically have no oversight whatsoever. Their budgets never shrink. They haven't shrunk in the last ten years. They only increase. You know, um, they buy more and better equipment. I'm not sure why you need machine guns at, you know, at schools. Uh, and they're, but, and they never, they also, you know, they're not, unlike the recreation days on the playground, they don't stop during breaks. Their behavior doesn't stop during breaks.
And just very succinctly, what is your recommendation around these schools?
My recommendation around police in and around schools. So, I, you know, inside schools, they need to be off those campuses, period. The overpolicing of youth around schools, particularly as, as, as young people on their way to school, absolutely simply must stop. And on transport, they got, I also would argue that that represents an absolute urgent need to halt.
Another question for the commissioner, Dr. James.
A couple of questions. Um, my understanding is that the local control funding formula is going to, um, potentially, uh, make changes to the school budgets, uh, to potentially decrease, uh, school policing. And so if you know that has occurred and, um, in terms of the budgets, could you talk about that continuing to increase?
My belief, and I have not done extensive research on this yet. This is a, a new area for me, but my belief is they've been redeployed with around there. Absolutely have been no reductions. Um, we haven't in the last two years seen any reductions. Uh, we've only seen increases. And so at best, uh, maybe stabilize or become more concentrated in poor communities or high-risk communities, which end up being black and brown communities. That's not okay.
Sorry.
Yes, okay.
Uh, next question is just, so what are, why are the administrators taking away these personal items to students? And, and all of that?
I don't follow it.
And these are things that you presumably, you know, parents purchase for their children's use, right?
Right. Yes.
And that's something that's probably is that.
I do not know if hand sanitizer is at risk for. I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Can you have a written recording of your, your research, or not in this moment?
Um, I have not been at this component of research, um, yet, but I can certainly point you to other.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dr. James.
Okay, uh, yes, my name is Gregory Brown. I am from Moss. And first of all, just start by saying, of all the incidents, law was started by, uh, we, uh, started behind gang violence against civilians, which gathered men from all around the state, but also really for the different communities of them. Uh, and I put them in those, certainly those, uh, tax courts that's in. Uh, my name is Chief Police Officer, supposed to be the park, like the days. Now, there was a incident that happened. Uh, well, a few incidents on the road here where, on a curio, this sheriff did drive by, killed a governor. Uh, I actually watched police, uh, as I'm working at a recreation center, driving on the grass, hit somebody for no reason, get out, and I get out there, proud, get out there, pull them. That's here now. Uh, in Georgia, somewhere in Georgia, there was a lot of crime going on, they said. And the black community, one of the black officers said, let us take over the community. And we're gonna try to make, we're gonna make the crime, crime go down. They did. But when they went back, they asked for more money. They said, what do we need money for? The crime is down. So when we head out here, just if the crime go down, and you check for the police, bringing jobs and all other things, you know, you don't have, you don't, you don't need the police. You don't need a senior police. So what we really need to do is find, find a way to weed out the bad police. And just bring in the ones that need, that need to be here, that's doing their job, a good job, and we, we may not need them. But, okay.
Thank you so much. Oscar, please.
I wanted to point out that I don't believe that the LAPD should be able to investigate themselves. I think their history has proven that. They're not alive in that central situation, you know, so I haven't received any video footage. It's been over ten months. The investigation is over. And just so I can't see any video of the families of Keisha Michael, Marquand Sam, that was over a year ago now, and they still, don't even have a police report on our, apparently a member who killed. Uh, another thing I wanted to talk about, also the, the cop in Anan is still not even arrested. He pulled out guns on his children. Somebody who has that bad a judgment can't be allowed to patrol our neighborhood without an armed gun. It is insane. And I also wanted to talk about, there was, uh, the first protest I ever attended in Los Angeles was after the killing of Michael Ford and Michael Brown in Ferguson. Uh, I went to the protest around 9:00 PM. We were surrounded by riot police at midnight and taken to jail. And I was trapped in jail until 9:00 PM that night, and I was called out of the cell at 9:00 PM. That was the next night, so I'd already been there in twenty-one hours. They put me in shackles and put me into a police van and took me to South Central. And we were released in South Central at midnight. When I met with the city attorney, he said he couldn't do anything for me, not, not to, you know, they admitted that they were at fault, but they said that if I did it again, which is protesting, that that could come back on our record, when there wasn't a crime. And so when I pointed it out to him and I told him, what are you gonna do to make sure this doesn't happen again? We actually got our freedom of speech. He told me that wasn't a problem. He also told me I couldn't record the conversation, which I still did. But he wasn't recording it, and he said, I can record it. So that, that, you know, applied to the whole system, or we're, we can't hold an accountable.
This is the attorney's office?
Uh, that, yeah, I want to see it. I think it was Michael's family called, maybe?
If you find, uh, people wanting to, to remind yourself, you can send it to us.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to record it, so.
Absolutely.
So we're gonna return to the survey that, uh, we talked about earlier. Um, you should have your clickers with you, if you can take those out. Look up on the screen. First question was on your resident of laws in Los Angeles. Do we, I want to ask them to go on this again? So go ahead and press one for yes and two for no. And do we need, um, try Spanish translation, if anyone needs Spanish translation? Okay. Or to, to speak it, if anyone needs to hear. I think it is, uh, que se habla español? Okay, so has everyone voted? Okay, so this is, here's the response. If you can see it. Fifty-three percent yes, sixty percent no. Okay, next question, if you're ready, is how old are you? Youth, your age is over twelve, is number one. Teenager, thirteen to eighteen, number two. Adults, ages nineteen to sixty, and older adult, age of sixty-one, no. Twenty-eight responses for right. Okay, does anyone vote? Okay, so see that, um, today we have six percent youth, ten percent teenagers, seventy-one percent adults, thirteen percent older adults. The third question is, that's how old are adults? Maybe collide with, you know, that's still a process. Number three, do you identify as a person of color? One for yes, two for no. As this kind of explains it, um, I think that same a lot of things, and a lot of years for making this all possible. So we have here eighty-four percent of you identify as of color and sixty percent no. Number four, if you identify as a person of color, which ethnic or racial group? And they know that some people are more racial, but we don't, and possibly with this technology, we pick one. So they want to go say they're of color. So one is, uh, black, African-American, two, Asian, Pacific-American, South Asian, three, Latino, Latina, four, Native American. So we have sixty-four percent black, African-American, forty percent Asian, Pacific-American, twenty percent Latino, Latina, and Native American. Number five, how do you identify your gender? And we, uh, apologize for letting this get out of bounds. One, female, two, male, three, transgender, or four, gendered non-binary, four, non-binary. You can see the results, seventy-six percent identify as female, twenty-one percent male, no transgender, and three percent non-binary. no transgender, and three percent nonconformity. Uh, number six, what has been your general experience with interacting with law enforcement in Los Angeles County, including the city of Los Angeles? One, positive overall. Two, some positive and some negative. Three, negative overall. And four, I haven't interacted with law enforcement before. And you responded that thirty percent responded positive, thirty-one percent some, positive, some negative, sixty-three percent negative overall, and fifty-three percent, uh, no reaction. Number seven, when you see law enforcement, what is your first reaction? One, neutral, no reaction. Two, happy, reassured. You see that the, the greatest, uh, number of you, forty percent are uneasy, nervous, forty-two percent afraid, and nine percent neutral, and zero, happy, reassured. Number eight, if you have ever been approached or stopped by law enforcement, how did it impact you? One, they are just doing their job. Two, I gave law enforcement a reason to approach and stop me. Three, it made me nervous and uncomfortable. And four, it felt like I was racially profiled or harassed. Thank you, everyone, for participating. I see the number of responses is getting, uh, the same time every time. So here we have the greatest response being nervous, uh, it made me nervous and uncomfortable, four percent. Thirty-three percent said, I thought I was racially profiled or harassed. Three percent said, uh, I gave law enforcement a reason to approach and stop me. None of them said they were just doing their job. Number nine, what is the perception of law enforcement in your community? They do, number one, they do a good job of keeping people safe. Number two, they are respectful of our community. Number three, harassment and racial profiling happens a lot. And four, fast, they go away with the peace. Seventy percent of you said, uh, fast, they go away with the peace. Thirty percent said, uh, harassment and racial profiling happens a lot. Yes, yes. Okay. And then number, uh, ten, do you think community relations needs to improve? Ninety-four percent said yes. Six percent said no. Eleven, what is needed for an effective public safety system? What we have?
I think the stopping at that last question.
Oh, we have to leave that. So we have to do eleven of them. Okay. All right, thank you, everyone.
Okay, so still a few more speakers, Audrey George, Delante Bolset, and Tim Lockham, and then you're next.
Hi. I'm grateful to have heard plenty of people speaking so powerfully about the truth on policing in this city. We all know that when there's failure to force, it unleashes horrible pain and suffering to a lot of the best people. What I want to elevate is just one thing in that, well, one is that, um, many of these people that suffer so much, the people that are killed in police custody, or before they were taken into custody, many would never have had charges, even filed against them if they hadn't been killed. Um, and none of them would have been in court, none of them will see justice, um, you know, see their case as business, or, um, reach acquittal, or have any opportunity to tell their own stories. And that's a travesty, unconditional, elevates the tragedy of what happens to them. And then reparations are not the same thing as when you get any damages awarded to you because you actually take the police department or the police to, um, to court. But to me, it's outrageous to know that when they're already just awarded to the families, that there's no impact or accountability taken by the police departments themselves. They are not the ones who pay the fines, the, um, the awards, it comes out of citizens' taxes. So it's, you know, that we're paying for these abuses of power, and we're, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I have you in there?
Hi, my name is Delante Bolset. My name is, uh, Delante Bolset from Pasadena, downtown Los Angeles. Personally, I would say I was born and raised in D.C., um, so I would just affirm that, uh, offering free metro access to children, it works. Uh, the full summer employment, uh, it works. We saw that, uh, under, uh, SNCC organizers, and of course, I'm very, 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 got this in order, uh, uh, city, when we saw, uh, fire, uh, significantly reduced, we saw community, uh, and these relationships, particularly impacted by Joseph's common sense policies. Uh, definitely wanna echo the, uh, uh, suggestions made around, that's in our region. Uh, I live in the city of Pasadena, uh, where, uh, just this past September, we saw the police murder Pete and Paige J.R. Thomas, uh, as community activists in Pasadena continue to, uh, ask for money that is being invested in, the police to be put into, uh, recreation centers and to schools, but instead we see the court of housing diminish, and we see the police budget continue to increase. Uh, in my context, I have a pastor in downtown, uh, the month of March is the anniversary of, uh, the brutal killing of Charlie Africa in downtown, uh, who, uh, as we know, not only dealt with mental illness, uh, but also dealt with addiction. Uh, we have, uh, eight officers who try to, uh, deal with one, uh, individual, uh, so again, who are dealing with is levels of institutional and systemic trauma. Uh, I help to facilitate, uh, community engagement, uh, gatherings, which, um, Sister, uh, Turner Gunning has been a part, uh, and others, where we, uh, bring citizens, activists, and community leaders together, attorneys, even with officers, and what we find overwhelmingly to be the problem of these, uh, core, uh, subjects, the main theme, we, uh, code our storytelling tables, and we code the solution gathering tables, is trauma. The main theme that's being expressed from the community and from the officers is trauma. Uh, over and over again, we have officers who are, well, officers and community members who are saying that they're off duty, as officers, they're being traumatized by those officers, particularly when the officer's in government. Uh, I had the opportunity to be at tables with the director for training, uh, for the LAPD, and this is set up to fail. Uh, there is nobody from the community who is present to train the officers, they're training themselves. Uh, this is a system that is on so many levels set up to fail. So I just wanna say that the trauma has to end, uh, the police commission needs to be restructured and made more like this, a situation that is flat. The community should be sitting at tables, there should be, uh, uh, it should be flat, it should be horizontal. We should learn from contexts like New Zealand, we should learn from contexts where sort of justice practices are effective and are working, and we need to reduce this hierarchical relationship that induces even further trauma, where you have to come two o'clock, uh, eight o'clock on a Tuesday morning, take off of your job, and deal with the trauma, police surrounding you as you sit trying to grant your complaints. If anything, then should be, as, as this is, I would suggest that there be, that this be more collaborative, that this be a circle, and that there be representatives from, uh, as, as it are here, that there be representatives from the community, um, and I would suggest that it be more flat than that, than that regard, and that when the community is ready for that, that we then bring the, the needed arbitrators, representatives from the police department, if the community is ready for that, and then, uh, have, uh, the real kind of engagement and accountability, uh, the community deserves. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, with all due respect, I disagree with something that you said, that we need to look at some examples that work. I just wanna say, you know, as we near the end of this, that this is working probably better than the architects of it ever imagined. Uh, this is not by accident. Uh, every two years, the county of Los Angeles generates a report across the board looking at all of the spot, the surface project areas, and the quality of life in those areas, and shows year after year after year that nothing is changing, that in fact, things are getting worse. Um, when we talk about police, uh, killing people within policy, and that that's what prefers them the right, um, how do we get beyond that kind of arbitrary systematic approach to, uh, extreme discipline, extreme response to deception of danger, uh, that excludes, you know, the fact that this elimination says, uh, that you get tried if you hurt someone. Uh, and so, you know, I'm thinking that, that this is, that we should stop expecting that this is gonna change anytime soon because it's working the way it's expected to work by the architects of it, that policy is what makes sense, or public policy is what makes sense, as it is. The other piece is that we listen to our leadership, the national leadership, President and Captain about screen vetting of people that either live here or deserve to live here. And I, I, I wish that this commission could show that it has some effect on the system and process by asking for a screen vetting of police officers and law enforcement. Not to suggest that we don't read them, but to make sure that they're mentally fit, because, you know, even if we look at supremacy, white supremacy, and that whole system of privilege, and how folks are, uh, plagued by this disorder, it's a mental illness. It's a mental illness, this whole idea of, uh, someone thinking that it's called superiority complex disorder. There needs to be screen vetting of our officers to make sure that they actually have capacity to protect this disorder.
Thank you very much.
I'm not here to debate anybody, but I'm not gonna sit here and play games with my mind and say that mental illness is what LAPD is doing. Um, at some point, you come to the realization of knowing that what's wrong, what's right. There is white supremacy involved, but with that being said, I wouldn't be able to go to an LAPD commissioner meeting without being able to say, being, being able to say anything that I wanna say without, uh, President Matt Johnson not blocking, not blocking the fact that I said, I wanna see the video of Keisha Wilson and having six of these police officers around me to have me glued. I wanna be able to go to an LAPD commissioner meeting without having Charlie B. sit there and grin and think that it's fun. I wanna be able to go to an LAPD commissioner meeting and not have Cindy on a plane stand there as a black woman and think that it's okay because she was appointed in August, and because Keisha Wilson was killed in March, that it doesn't concern her. I'm not set models to read her mind, but I've never been wrong about judging, judging a certain people and watching their actions. I wanna be able to sit at a commissioner meeting and not have Steve Zoroff flip off the letters because he doesn't like us being set. I wanna be able to go to a police commissioner meeting and not have LAPD outside at seven thirty in the morning, look right here. Chief Tolday? Everybody wants to sit and play games with him? Eric Garcetti? Doesn't work. That's the problem. We have, I'm not even gonna say, DT in office. You think at any point that him and Eric Garcetti are not collaborating with the eyes of anything else that's going on? They fool themselves and think it's not.
So our whole hearing is coming to, has come to, has come to a ring. Um, I wanna thank all of you who came out and spoke, especially the family members who came forward with American for Decimal. Just thank you for the courage, you know, for our support and continuing with you. And thank all of you for, for speaking up today, because this is a very important mission I really want to say is to be closing the door.
Again, we wanna thank everyone who's come out, and we wanna thank you for your engagements. Um, in this process, we also know a lot of the work that's being done around is coming from you. We wanna remind you that we don't really have the authority to implement your recommendations. What we have the capacity to do is generate the report and build out these best practices. Once we do that, we think our relationship can be, is that report can empower you to continue to advocate. So we're trying to use as much space and as much authority as we have to bring justice forward, and be very clear that this commission doesn't have the authority to implement, but we can do as much as we can to generate tools to push. Um, we also wanna encourage you, and we know that you're already involved and already done a lot of this work, you all may know, I hope that you know, that Los Angeles City Council recently pushed for additional controls on the street. Uh, and so as you consider to do your advocacy, uh, continue to do your advocacy work, and consider where you're gonna put your resources, we wanna remind you that there are numerous points, again, including, uh, the Los Angeles Police Commission, which meets every Tuesday at nine thirty at LAPD headquarters. Uh, you may wanna go there, but we know that we have LAPD City Council meetings, including the Public Safety Committee, uh, meetings that you can go to, and partly they are putting more controls out there, included controlling metros, so there's also the metro board meetings that you can attend. So we're gonna encourage you to continue to do that work. Uh, again, I just wanna echo Commissioner Bennet's appreciation, especially for the families, I think all of us are, um, stand out with the appreciation of people, are in awe, that you're able to use opinions that I think, um, is unimaginable, to struggle for more of a free and peaceful and just society, and to know that our love and our support are with you, and whatever we can do to continue to work together, we're committed to.
Thank you very much, everyone.